All right, here we go, folks. The regular meeting of the Mishwaka Common Council for Monday, May 18, 2020, will please come to order. Once again, in light of the ongoing pandemic, we will be operating under some altered procedures here this evening. Then, members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, the council president will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting any comments, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his/her public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And this is a reminder also to council members participating remotely, if they would, please keep your microphone on mute until your name is called or you wish to speak. And we thank everyone for this cooper- for their cooperation. With that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in memory of the more than 90,000 American citizens who have lost their lives as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
(Pledge of Allegiance) Do you apply to the United States of America, to your republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Thank you. One other item before we move into the roll call. This evening, you will see that some council members either have masks with them or they are wearing them. Consistent with the guidance from the county health department, it is appropriate, given the social distancing that we're able to put in place in the council chamber, for individual council members not to wear their mask during the meeting. And then, as a practical matter, of course, it makes it difficult at times to speak. By the same token, some council members and other speakers may choose to have the mask on. And again, it does matter of personal choice, consistent with the guidance of the health experts. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
I'll check to see if Mr. Hazen's.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 4, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a letter from the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding recommendations from their May 12, 2020 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of Mishwaka Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following use variances were considered. Appeal number 2020-10, an appeal submitted by Artisan Investment Group requesting a use variance for 201 Smith Street to allow three units in R1 Single Family Residential zoning. The Board with a vote of 4 to 0 recommended approval. Appeal number 2020-11, an appeal submitted by Artisan Investment Group requesting a use variance for 1210 West Sixth Street to allow three units in an R1 Single Family Residential zoning. The Board with a vote of 4 to 0 recommended approval, subject to the following condition: A hard-surface parking pad shall be provided for three marked parking spaces. Appeal number 2020-16, an appeal submitted by Bethel College requesting a use variance for the southeast corner of West Lowell Avenue and Clay Street to allow a shipping container for storage purposes for the training center. The Board with a vote of 4 to 0 recommended approval, subject to the following conditions: If I may omit reading the lengthy conditions.
Please do so.
This is signed by Kerry Myers, Secretary to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We also have a letter from the Mishwaka City Plan Commission regarding recommendations from their May 12, 2020 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishwaka Plan Commission was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following proposed ordinances were considered. Petition number 2020-05, a petition submitted by Mark and Deborah Camm to rezone 1215 East Jefferson Boulevard and 1225 East Jefferson Boulevard, from C1 General Commercial District to C5 Neighborhood Commercial District and I1 Heavy Industrial District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District. The Commission with a vote of 9 to 0 recommended approval. Petition number 2020-06, a petition submitted by Elm Street Capital and HD Development of Maryland, seeking approval to amend the University Town Center Home Depot Planned Unit Development to allow quick-service oil change as a use and for a reduction in the number of parking spaces, setbacks, and landscaping. The Commission with a vote of 6 to 3 recommended denial. Petition number 2020-08, a petition submitted by RH Line, seeking to annex and zone 52921, 52861, 52885, 52841 for Road Ranger to C1 General Commercial District. The Commission with a vote of 9 to 0 recommended approval. Petition number 2020-09, a petition submitted by the M Group LLC-S Series 407 West Fourth Street, seeking to rezone 407 West Fourth Street from I1 Light Industrial District to C3 City Center Commercial District. The Commission with a vote of 9 to 0 recommended approval. Petition number 2020-09, a petition submitted by the M Group LLC-S Series 407 West Fourth Street, seeking to rezone 407 West Fourth Street from I1 Light Industrial District to C3 City Center Commercial District. The Commission with a vote of 9 to 0 recommended approval. Pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-605, the Mishwaka Plan Commission hereby certifies to the Mishwaka Common Council the attached proposed ordinances regarding the above matters. This is signed by Kerry Myers, Secretary to the City Plan Commission. I also have a letter. This is just a presentation to the council of a letter to the county auditor regarding consolidated TIP districts that should be just read into the record. If you, I'm sure you've already read it, you don't need me to read it to you again, but it will be in the record, permanent record.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Let's take a pause there. Are there any questions or comments regarding the letter we received from Mr. Prince on this topic? Hearing none, then the record will reflect that the letter has been received by the council.
Thank you. Did you say I should do something again? We have a public hearing on vacation, R2 2020-01, required by state statute on behalf of the Mishwaka High School vacating areas of North Winger Avenue between Lincoln Way East and Homewood. The east 63 feet of the east-west alley north of Lincoln Way East, all alleys bounded by Homewood on the north, Indiana on the west, and Winger on the east.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on vacation 2020-01, as required by state statute. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the vacation, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record, Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, Ken Prince, City Planner. The vacation of Winger and the alleys associated with the high school parking lot modification and entry modification was submitted months ago. When they submitted, when Abmar submitted the proposal, there were two exhibits, both of them were marked the same, even though they were different. My staff only picked up on the one, and we inadvertently did not include the other legal description. So, when notice went out, it went out as the entire vacation went out. We don't feel like anybody was disenfranchised yet. We have an ordinance that doesn't match the legal description. So what we are trying to do this evening is merely correct the legal restrictions so the ordinance matches the actual vacation that took place. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? All right. Thank you, Mr. Prince. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed vacation, in particular those who are participating remotely? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, we will now offer an opportunity for anyone, particularly those participating remotely, who wishes to speak in opposition to proposed vacation 2020-01. If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, the record will reflect that we have closed the public hearing on this matter. Thank you. There are no reports of special committees this evening, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-11, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana. This is vacating areas of North Winger Avenue between Lincoln Way East and Homewood, the east 63 feet of the east-west alley north of Lincoln Way East, all alleys bounded by Homewood on the north, Indiana on the west, and Winger on the east for Mishwaka High School, and is requested that we have second reading this evening.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I move that we hold second reading for petition number, ordinance number 2020-11.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to suspend our regular council rules, hold first and second reading this evening on proposed ordinance number 2020-11. Although, old habits once again. Madam Clerk, if you would, please poll the council.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
I'm going to ask for Mr. Hazen, is he there? Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes 8 to 0.
Thank you. With that, we will move into second reading and public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-11. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance, who is physically present, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We'll make a notation for the record that Mr. Prince is going to incorporate by reference his comments that he made earlier during the public hearing portion. Thank you, Mr. Prince. With that, we will now move to anyone who is participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-11. If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance 2020-11, if you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The proposed ordinance passes 8 to 0. Proposed ordinance number 2020-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from C1 General Commercial, C5 Neighborhood Commercial, and I2 Heavy Industrial to R3 Multi-Family Residential 1215 and 1225 East Jefferson.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2020-12 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow quick-service oil changes at a use and reduction of parking spaces, setbacks, and landscaping, 317 West Indian Ridge Boulevard.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2020-13 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-14, an ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, providing zoning classification therefore. This is to annex a zone to C1 General Commercial, 52921, 52861, 52885, and 52841 for Road.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-14 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-15, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I1 Light Industrial to C3 City Center Commercial, 407 West Fourth Street.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-15 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-16, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, transferring and appropriating $500,000 from the ceded fund to the ceded revolving loan fund and authorizing the use of said funds for the purpose of making loans under the COVID-19 emergency loan program.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-16 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. On a related note, Mr. Emmons, who chairs the Budget and Finance Committee, has asked me to share that the committee has scheduled a committee meeting for tomorrow evening, Tuesday, May 19, at 5:30 p.m. here in the city council chambers. There will also be remote access that will be provided through WebEx in order to consider this proposed ordinance and other related matters. Mr. Emmons has asked me to remind anyone interested in participating that in, due to some scheduling conflicts on the part of certain participants, he anticipates that the meeting is going to start promptly at 5:30. And all members of the public who may choose to attend physically are asked to wear masks in keeping with the public health guidance. With that announcement being shared, we will now move into resolutions.
Resolution R 2020-07, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishwaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 201 Smith Street in Mishwaka, Indiana. This is use variance for three units in R1 Single Family Residential, 201 Smith Street.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-07. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please either step forward to the podium or unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Are there any members of the public who are participating remotely who wish to speak with regard to 201 Smith Street? One last time, are there any members of the public who are participating remotely who wish to speak with respect to 201 Smith Street?
Anyone with the artisan group?
Or artisan group?
Yes.
Ah, we have a taker. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Got a taker.
All right. If you would, please begin with your name and address for the record.
Marlin Schwartz, 420 North Main Street, Suite 1, Middlebury, Indiana, 46540.
Could you share a little bit about your request, sir?
Sure. Primarily, it came up about it not being in compliance with zoning when we looked for refinancing with the bank. So, basically, the use, not looking to change anything, it's been that way all the way back since we could find in 1979 or prior, that it was, been used as a three-unit separately metered there. And so, ultimately, I guess we're just looking to, you know, get the zoning lined up with what it is as a three-unit. So, that's the request.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner? Sir, just for the record, could you provide a little bit more detail with regard to what your relationship is with the artesian, I'm sorry, artisan group?
Yes, I'm a 50% member.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And just more out of curiosity than anything else, we have a subsequent matter that appears to also have been filed by you or on your behalf. Other than, you know, the details that you shared, is there anything else that causes two matters affiliated with your entity to be before us this evening, or did you stumble across this anachronism at the same time?
Yep, that is correct. As we were going through the records, they're both the exact same thing, refinancing with First State Bank. And so, we were just going through that, and they said that's where it came up. And so, there's nothing different or whatever, it's just literally that, we were going through the properties that we had purchased in the package. And I guess when it comes up, when they sell something in a package, it's a non-issue, depending on what bank it is. But, you know, depending on who the financier is, they will not allow it to be in their portfolio if it's not in compliance on the zone. So, nothing different, same thing, again, three-unit. And so, it's just literally a zoning thing.
Okay. Thank you for the information, sir. If there's nothing else that you wish to share, I will ask you to, once again, mute your microphone, and we will move forward with further consideration of this matter. But thank you.
Very good. You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of proposed resolution 2020-07? Hearing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to proposed resolution 2020-07? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
8 to 0, unless Mr. Hazen's rejoined us. Resolution R 2020-08, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishwaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1210 West Sixth Street, Mishwaka, Indiana. This is a use variance for three units in R1 Single Family Residential, 1210 West Sixth Street.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-08. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Mr. Schwartz, are you still with us?
Yes, sir.
I know it sounds overly technical, but if you could start out by, once again, stating your name and address for the record, and then share with us any other details that you wish to share, that would be great.
No problem. Marlin Schwartz, 420 North Main Street, Suite 1, Middlebury, Indiana, 46540, a 50% owner of Artisan Investment Group.
Thank you. Anything else particular to this parcel that you wish to share with the council?
No, sir, I think it's pretty much the same. The zoning, again, to brand the compliance, they did inform me that I would need to pave it, which I'm totally fine with, if that's what it takes. So, I would just like to know, like, what kind of timeframe? I mean, if you look at Smith Street, I think we try to do the best that we can, we try not to be slumlord, and I think 201 Smith Street would speak to that. And so, same thing with 1210, it's a work in progress, and we're putting money into it. And so, that's why we're okay with doing the pavement for the parking in the back. I would just like to know how much time we have to do that.
Actually, I am going to ask you to contact, or suggest that you contact, Mr. Prince in the planning department. And after this evening's action, he'll be able to best work for you with regard to timeframes and action steps from this point forward. So certainly, Mr. Prince is famous for being very helpful to folks, but if there's any, if there are any other lingering issues, you can certainly contact the council, but Mr. Prince will be your best resource.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Schwartz? Thank you, sir. If you would, please mute your microphone once again. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed resolution 2020-08? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to proposed resolution 2020-08? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Is Mr. Hazen joining us?
I'm, I heard him.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you, Tony. Are you there? Okay, did you, did you hear the question? This is on 2020-08, the resolution.
Yes.
The use variance, your vote is?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
9 to 0 in favor? Resolution number 2020-09, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishwaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishwaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at the southeast corner of West Lowell Avenue and Clay Street in Mishwaka, Indiana. This is a use variance for relocating shipping containers, developmental variance for reduction of parking spaces, Bethel University Athletic Training Center, southeast corner of West Lowell Avenue and Clay Street.
Thank you. This is the public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-09. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Esteemed President and honorable commission or council members, my name is Luke Lynch, 121 Wabash Avenue, Mishwaka, Indiana, 46544. I'm here representing Bethel University. I'm the vice president for institutional advancement. We Bethel University are requesting a use variance to allow a shipping container for storage accessory to a proposed 24,000-square-foot athletic training facility adjacent athletic fields, and a developmental variance to allow for a reduction of required number of off-street parking spaces. Just a little bit of history related to this property. 2005, we started the purchase of the said property. We paid, 2005, we paid 525,000, April 20, April 2008, we paid 990,000. December of 2008, we continued finalizing the purchase. The total purchase price was 1,585,000. We put a total of $885,000 into the property, total investment to remediate, to purchase and remediate the property of about $2,500,000. Just want to put that in context. Bethel seeks to not be a good neighbor, but a great neighbor. And with that being said, I've spent the past five months meeting with Councilwoman Volker, as well as many folks within the neighborhood, and I believe we have the majority of the support of the neighbors. But a new athletic facility is proposed to be constructed at the southwest, southeast corner of West Lowell and Clay Street. The final site plan was submitted in conjunction with the variance, and both were submitted and approved by the Planning Commission after the Board of Zoning Appeals. The container is proposed- The container is proposed to be moved to the south of an existing, existing 1,200-square-foot storage building, and east of the new facility were shown, were shown on the attached site plan. I do want to let you know that we have, we have met with the neighbors, with Kate, and with the planning, planning department, and we are going to improve the shed as well. We're going to paint it, re-roof it, we're going to move the, the, the container as well as have buffers as appropriate along the way. As I said, we don't just seek to be a good neighbor, we seek to be a great neighbor. Although the container was originally placed on the property without approval from the city, did not comply with a permitted use, and we apologize for that. That happened a couple of years ago before I came to Bethel in, in July of last year. But the container will be moved to a portion of the site that is less visible from the adjacent public right of ways and neighborhood properties than its current location. The existing storage in proposed building will be, will screen the container to the northwest, to the north, and west, and south. We also, as I said, will have a solid row of evergreen trees to be planted along the portion of the east property line, were generally shown on the site plan. Existing trees along the property line will also be maintained to provide screening. Additional trees are not required adjacent to the existing storage building due to the lack of space between the structural property line. Based on the two parking spaces per 1,000 square foot of gross floor area, which is applicable ratio for a recreational building in the R1 and R3 districts, a total of 49 parking spaces are required for the 24,431 square feet building. We're requesting just 16, a reduction because it'd be mainly foot traffic and not additional traffic by vehicle. So we state, as we stated in the petition, the building will be located on the south edge of the campus, within walking distance of most of the facility users, and these are athletes, and if they can't walk, the coaches will have a problem, and as will I. As a result, the site will not need a number of parking spaces required per ordinance. The proposed 16 spaces should provide adequate, if not far and exceeding, of what, what is currently needed. I do want to mention to you, there are a few exhibits that I handed to the clerk before the meeting. One is a news release that was sent out last week related to our opening face-to-face classes in, in the, just want to clarify that we will have, we haven't worked out completely, completely all the plans, but they're in motion, but we will apply, I mean, we will comply with all the health recommendations to bring students back in the fall. But there will not, there will be some quarantine lodging, just in case there would be a person that would have contact with somebody, direct contact, or if somebody would, one of our students would come down to it. We will be doing testing when they, when students arrive on campus, temperature testing, and we probably will be doing testing of all of our students as well. So I just wanted to let you know, we will safely comply with, overly comply, if not, with all the CDC as well, as well as the Health Department recommendations to bring our students back safely and to keep them safe. I do want to make note, too, a community impact report has been handed out to you as well, and this is one of the things that was, that we cited in here, and is the Indiana, Independent Colleges of Indiana estimate that our total contribution to the state is about 70 million, and our total contribution to City Mishawaka is 36 million. So not only do I believe that Bethel University, Mishawaka's university, is a great place to attend and a great place to work, and we have not foreboded one staff, by the way, nor do we plan on, but we are a major player in our investment of dollars. With that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lynch and Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. I just had one quick question, Matt. I wanted to clarify, when you say that Bethel is making a $36 million investment in Mishawaka, is that an annual investment?
I mean, that is, again, that was, yes. I mean, that is an annual investment. That was, those numbers were given to us by the Independent Colleges of Indiana, which makes that estimate. But that is, that is, we have 500, 200 employees that are full-time equivalents. We employ during the school year another 300. That's taxes, that's, that's all kinds of aid that comes into the area, that's tourist industry, that is the compilation of everything, yes.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lynch?
Mr. President?
Mr. Compton?
Mr. Lynch, thank you very much. I appreciate the information and your presentation. I grew up two blocks from Bethel campus. What was Bethel College Park was where I played little, or played park baseball and spent a lot of my summers sledding and in the woods in there, so I spent a lot of time over there. So I appreciate the university and what it has done and grown into in Mishawaka. But a couple of questions, really one. You mentioned quarantining of students. Could you expand on that a little bit and tell the council what the plans are for where that would take place? Would it be on campus? Would it be off campus? Tell us a little bit about that. And I realize you have, you know, I think it was clerk, our clerk block that said that people would be coming in from all over the country. Maybe it wasn't her, that's what I already called, but really, they're coming in from all over the world, as I remember. So, you know, I have a concern about that and about students coming in who might get sick, and then we've seen this grow rapidly in small, tight spaces like that. So tell us a little bit about that and what the plans are, if you would, please. Thank you.
So first of all, there will be screening at the time when students come back, both temperature screening, and probably they'll be screening for everybody once they come back. And there will continue to be all the enhanced things that we need to do, hand washing, social distancing and all. If, so, you know, nobody should come, if anybody would come here from another country, we would screen them, and they wouldn't be admitted until we knew that they were not, they did not have COVID-19. If somebody developed COVID-19 while here, they, we have a couple, a few houses, several Bethel-owned houses, which are essentially on or adjacent to our campus, and those would be for quarantine lodging. But again, they'll be screened appropriately and probably re-screened, and then if, you know, regular testing would be done, and if we found somebody with COVID-19, or if they had first level contact with a person who had COVID-19, they would be placed in a quarantine. And again, these houses are Bethel-owned houses on or adjacent to a property.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. That was, was a concern that, you know, we've seen what South Bend did with a hotel, and I'm not sure, I'd like to see that in Mishawaka for, for whatever reason. So I appreciate that comment and Bethel's concern. Thank you.
And we, yes, we, we are going to be great neighbors and make sure that not the, nothing is, is done like we've seen in other places in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions from the council for Mr. Lynch?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. Mr. Lynch, I drive by some of the housing for Bethel on Logan Street daily, and it sure seems like there's a lot of activity in the big three-story buildings. I don't know if it's students, staff. I've seen furniture and belongings moving in and out. How many people do you have on campus right now?
We have approximately 50 students or international students, or students that could not go home for various reasons. And, you know, the, actually, the best place for them was to stay on campus. And again, if there, they would show any signs of any symptoms or signs of having COVID-19, they would be in quarantine. But for the most part, the campus is empty except for those folks, and there's activity mainly right now at this point, other than those students and staff going in and cleaning up and sanitizing. So there's been a lot of movement of furniture and things in and out, but mainly out at this point, because we had a lot of students that did not come back after they left, and so we've had to put them in storage. So at this point, other than the international students, I would believe that it would be staff that would be moving things around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benicki. Other questions for Mr. Lynch?
Yes, Mr. President, if I could?
Mr. Mamalanti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lynch, for your detailed presentation and information that was given. Quick question regarding, you had mentioned that you had held a neighborhood meeting regarding the athletic complex. If you could, could you just go into a little bit more detail about that meeting? Did you, did it take place at a certain venue, or did you walk door-to-door? If you could just explain that a little bit further, please.
Sure. We had intended to have an in-person meeting at, on the university campus, but because of COVID-19, we had a Zoom meeting. Councilwoman Volker was there, and we lasted approximately an hour. It was in April, I believe, March or April. We had, I think, besides Kate, probably four neighbors, three or four neighbors, as well as a few of our administrators, including myself. The nature of the meeting was very positive, a lot of questions were asked, and I think we were able to answer all the questions satisfactorily. And we, in addition to that, though, we had talked with the president of the Neighborhood Association, Pam Plowsky, as well as Stephen Miller, as well as Daryl, can't think of Daryl's last name, but we, we spent a lot of time answering a lot of questions. So it's always a pleasure to do that, for my concern. No, we didn't have time to go door-to-door, but we did open it up to everybody.
Well, I appreciate the efforts in that regard to allow the neighbors to voice their, their questions and concerns. If you could, were there any, any strong objections that any of them had shared?
I wouldn't say strong objections, actually, none related to the building itself. All of them were related, as I recall, to, you know, to the buffers that needed to be, to be made, the buffering that we have agreed to, and improvements on the shed that was there. I believe we inherited the shed from the trailer park, and it's, those improvements have been a long time coming, but we're going to be a great neighbor, and as long as I'm there, we're not just going to live up to the letter of the law, we're going to exceed it. So I think after, mainly those concerns were related to improving the areas, the shed, the buffering, and, and then some questions about traffic, and we let them know that, you know, that it's, it's really good news that we're going to have less parking spaces, not more, and we're, and most of the traffic will be foot traffic.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lynch? Mr. Lynch, thank you for your presentation. As was stated earlier, good information. And I echo the earlier comments, and appreciate the work that you and Mrs. Volker did to reach out to the neighbors. I suspect that Mr. Mamalanti and Mrs. DeMaye, along with myself, also would have liked to have participated in that, since we also represent the folks who live there. But the most important thing is that you had the meeting, that you met the needs of the residents, but in the future, if you could think about perhaps being a little bit more inclusive as Bethel continues to grow, I think other council members would appreciate participating in those type of events.
You bet. And you're welcome to come over anytime.
We appreciate that. You know, I also note the comment in the staff report, you referenced it in your remarks as well, that technically, things got a little bit out of sequence here before you even joined Bethel, and that the storage container was placed on the property prior to observing the legal formalities, which sounds probably overly technical to folks, but I know that you agree with me as a former councilperson and someone who has served over these many years on the Plan Commission, that the process is important.
Absolutely.
In the past, I and others have expressed, you know, greater concern with regard to petitioners who have operated out of sequence, but, you know, certainly, it's relevant in my mind that Bethel is such a good citizen, corporate entity and citizen of Mishawaka, and I'm confident that, you know, given your background and your new role there, that you'll help steer them straight as they continue to grow with regard to observing the formalities.
I will indeed.
I appreciate that. And then, you know, last but not least, echoing Mr. Compton's questions and, and your responses, as I mentioned during the pre-meeting, it's good news that Bethel is making plans to welcome the student body back to the community, as are Notre Dame, St. Mary's, our other local institutions of higher education. But I share the concern that, you know, Mr. Compton articulated, you are physically, as an entity, in fairly close proximity to a residential neighborhood. And I think it behooves all of us in this ever-changing pandemic to have, you know, good, accurate information, and for the community, more to the point, to have the information with regard to what your plans are as you welcome those international and national students back to campus. So once again, as I mentioned during the pre-meeting, my suggestion would be that our Public Health and Safety Committee chaired by Mr. Compton work with you to set up a time for us to have a chance to receive additional information with regard to Bethel's plans to reopen. I would be shocked if the state of medical science and guidance hadn't changed by the time that we got together, you know, sometime in June or no later than July, before the students come back to campus, and then we'll have a better opportunity to be able to work through the issues. But I do appreciate the information that you've shared with us this evening, and if you have no, no objection, then I'll ask Mr. Compton to work with you to set something up in the near future for us to have a larger discussion about Bethel's plans for reopening.
Absolutely. We will, we will follow the CDC guidelines, the governor's guidelines, the guidelines set forth by Mishawaka, City of Mishawaka, and safety to our students and to our community is paramount.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do have a question for Mr. Lynch.
Mrs. DeMaye?
Mr. Lynch, is the, is the athletic facility going to be open to the public at all?
It will, it will primarily, primarily be open for students and athletes. However, there will be some times when we provide clinics for high school track athletes, and, and then there may be some times when we have a summer camp, potentially, not this year, obviously. So it will, it will be an asset that will be utilized. It will be a long, narrow facility, so it's not going to be a track, and there won't be competitions, but there will be times when camps or clinics, and other times when the public will be welcomed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, I got, Mr. Make's question triggered a thought, so I do have one more question for Mr. Lynch. Mr. Lynch, I thought I read somewhere that Bethel was offering swimming scholarships, and I don't recall that in the past. Could you confirm that? And if that is the case, is there plans for a pool? And if that is the case, is there plans for a pool?
That's a great question. And yes, we have scholarships. And one of the things that really sets Bethel University apart is that we use a lot of times the community's assets. And so this year, for the first time, we had a swim team, and we are using the new Aquatic Center in Elkhart. And so we're blessed to be able to do that. We couldn't afford a facility that would be on that par. And so we're blessed to be able to do that. And we use the Knollwood for tennis courts. We use the Knollwood tennis courts. We use Blackthorne golf courts. We're going to use the Century Center for our new esports team. So we're very uniquely positioned as an urban campus in Mishawaka. And while Notre Dame and others, no offense, are able to have all those facilities, we cannot, but we are gladly using the facilities in our community.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Let's just say you don't have the resources at the moment. Again, that campus has grown exponentially, so who knows what the future will be. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed Resolution 2020-019? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If you would, please unmute and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to commend Matt Lynch and the team that you have at Bethel University for the amount of work that you did with the Low Woods neighborhood group. The group that was asking the majority of the questions, actually, all the questions, consisted of basically four people. And that is the group that we had the Zoom meeting with. With that being said, it was a six-month-long process. And up to last Monday and Tuesday, prior to the Plan Commission, at which point Pam Plowski did say that she was satisfied with the screening and the things that Bethel had committed to. So, but I just think you did a really terrific job working with the neighbors, and I know that you're going to continue to do that. And I know that they're going to hold your feet to the fire anyway, even if you weren't going to, even if something changed. But I am really pleased to have Bethel University as part of my district and, of course, as part of Mishawaka, and certainly happy to have the major investment that Bethel University has made to our city and will continue to make in the future. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and I'll be supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Any other council members wishing to speak?
Did I hear someone call for the question?
If not, I will call for the question now.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yeah.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
920, the resolution passes. Resolution R 2020-10, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka waiving the required filing date of August 16, 2018, and May 26, 2019, in acceptance of the late filing of the deduction application for the real estate rehabilitation located in an economic revitalization area established by Resolution Number R 2017-17 for Lipper Components Manufacturing, Inc., located at 400 South Burkett Avenue.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2020-10. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium. Mr. Prince.
Mr. President, members of the council, Ken Prince, City Planner. The matter before you this evening is a matter of timeliness. And you may recall, a few years ago, we had a similar issue with Dearborn Crane where the council had to approve a resolution for a late filing. In this case, it's a Form 322RE. So Mr. Spearon, working through the tax abatement compliance, identified that this form had not been timely filed. We asked Lipper for essentially an explanation, and we probably got a whole lot more than we were anticipating. So we only gave you the abbreviated version of the 128 pages that was submitted. But what I want to emphasize is that they went through an appeals process. So you can imagine, when you make many millions of dollars from investment in a facility, the assessment, particularly on the manufacturing side, can be complicated. So they worked diligently with the assessor's office. And unlike other entities, and I'll use the Big Box Department Stores as an example, Lipper was not, they were seeking an accurate measure of the value, not a reduction in the value. And I think that's an important part of this component. So they have followed through on their investment. Like they said, we feel like they should get the abatement that was granted by this council as part of the process, and your action this evening will allow them to receive that. I also would note that I believe either Mr. Salisbury or Mr. Bouters was going to call in if you had any questions. So they should be on the line as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but this is, again, more of a procedural item than anything.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chairman Hicksonbaugh, this is Tom Bouters, 9581 East 100 North, Akron, Indiana, 4690. And to follow up on City Planner, Mr. Prince's comments, I would appreciate the continued support by the City Council. We did have the 17 and 18 assessment that was in, it was being reviewed by the county assessor. And we had preempted that since it was still in the construction phase. And then when we finished the construction in late 18, the assessor did not have access to the building and all the improvements. So as Mr. Prince said, we decided it was only fair to the city to have the assessor come in and pick the tires, so to speak, do a complete walkthrough with his staff, come up with an assessment that, albeit, we will have an abatement, but the assessment increased considerably from $4 million to the $7 million. In addition to that, we did a cost segregation study where we analyzed the fixed assets, real assets for personal real estate purposes, and for federal income tax purposes. Obviously, we get a better deduction sooner for personal property than real. So we amended our personal property tax return to reflect this. We filed amended returns, not only for the Burkett address, but also for the Edison Lakes area. So we have took Mr. Prince's comments. And as you know, I've met with all of you folks a year or two ago. We were planning to be good corporate citizens. And so come the year before us today, St. Mary's, we missed the former level of yield deadline. That's because we were trying to get our assessment right for Mr. Prince's comments. So with that, I ask you to support this and appreciate the continued support. And welcome to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Bouters?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Bellage.
Mr. Bouters, I know your organization moved their headquarters to Mishawaka as well a couple of years ago with the facility on the Burkett Street property and then the headquarters building. What kind of total investment do you have in our community?
That's a great question. And I have my colleague Joe Salisbury down in as well. I believe we're in excess of 25 million old facilities combined. May I ask Joe if he has that number off the top of his head?
Yeah, I don't have any. I'll pull it up here real quick, but.
Sir, excuse me, if you could.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please start out by stating your name and address for the record.
Yep, this is Joe Salisbury, 57191 Clona Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I'm the tax manager for Lipper.
Thank you.
Yeah, so cumulative to date, we've invested just under $40 million between the purchase of the buildings and the rehab of both the headquarters in Edison Lakes and the Burkett Building, so just under 40 million.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for either Mr. Bouters or Mr. Salisbury? Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. If you would, please unmute your microphone once again. And then I will ask for anyone else wishing to speak in favor of proposed Resolution 2020-10. Please unmute your microphone and state your name and address. Hearing no one, I'll ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak?
Yes, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Just no question, just more of a comment. Appreciate it. Want to thank Mr. Bouters, Mr. Salisbury, and Lipper Components for their continued investment in the City of Mishawaka. The Burkett facility, along with the Edison Lakes facility, is very beautiful and very well-kept. So we greatly appreciate it and wish you all the best of luck in rebounding this recovery in the RV market.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. I'm sure we all echo those comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yeah.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 920.
Thank you. We have no ordinances on second reading. Unless there's an objection, since we had so much public commentary tonight, let's go ahead and just open it up for privilege of the floor. At this point, members of the public are invited to unmute their microphone, state their name and address for the record, and submit commentary with regard to not agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Hearing no one, we will move into unfinished business, of which there is none, new business.
Mayor Wood's.
Mr. President.
Routine update.
Why don't we defer until Mayor Wood completes his update for us?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, Dave Wood, Mayor here to give our routine update on our response to the COVID pandemic. Not too much has changed since I last updated you. We remain stable and low cases here in Mishawaka and in particular in our hospital. Our curve has been flattened, and it has stayed flat. That included, as you well remember, the curve was meant to keep the rush of patients out of the hospital. And so I believe as of today, there are less than 10 patients COVID-positive in the hospital. Our run volume also is a way for us to kind of gauge what's going on out there. It has remained low as far as our pandemic framework calls. We average about two to three a day. Most of those end up being negative, the vast majority of those. In fact, we're going, I think, today, in fact, they were going to drop the pandemic framework and just treat everything like they were pandemic calls. However, most again will not be pandemic runs. And that's partially because of the information that they get from the dispatch. They've showed up to some where they suspect it might be the case, and then others where it could be the case, but they weren't warned in advance. So they're just going to go ahead and treat everything like it is pandemic run. No employees to date have been infected. We keep daily track of that through our clinic, and that's another good sign. And we have good supplies on hand, including all PPE with the possible exception of gowns. We are running low, but getting shipments in this week. So we should be fine there, too. We have normalized operations, as you have seen. As you've entered into this building, the public is now able to access all of our buildings that they could before. I've asked all of our departments to submit plans to normalize each of their departments. And our department managers ran that process. They submitted those plans to me and to a committee that I developed, which contained our HR director, our safety director, our central services director, and also my COVID czar, Assistant Chief Brian Thomas, who reviewed the plans. And in some cases, it involved a lot of build-out, the installation of screens, the installation of barriers so that public can't enter into workspace. And in some cases, we had to put a physical barrier between workers. And so we got pretty creative on those kinds of things. We built out those plans, and then we had a team go around and inspect, as I did personally, those plans to make sure that each department was ready to open before we made the call to open, which happened last Monday. Then we conducted our site visits. We have had to make adjustments along the way. We continue to have to do that. You know, sometimes, especially in certain workspaces, people tend to get a little close and comfortable with each other, and we just are making sure that we double back our efforts to make sure that we let all of our staff know that you've still got to maintain the physical distancing and the CDC recommendations and the Health Department orders that we are following as well. We have purchased thermometers. They are in every department. And we are strongly encouraging all of our staff to take daily readings of their temperatures and record those down. It's hard for us to make staff do that, but we are strongly encouraging that. And then we've also, just here last week, I set up a rapid response team. We think that it could be inevitable that we do have a staff member that eventually could develop a positive case, knowing that there is no cure and may be a long time before there is a cure or a vaccine. So we're planning, what does that look like if we do have a positive? And so we put together a committee to, again, develop some plans for that. And our plans would include, how do we deal with coworkers? Because we know that there is a significant amount of stress and mental issues that coworkers could face, given all of the, you know, the news that's out there and all of the, you know, all of the stress that's related to it. So we will work with that stressed in our plan. And we want to stress the mental aspect of that and dealing with coworkers. We obviously would need a much revised disinfection process if, you know, we found that there was a worker in a workspace. So we're developing procedures to look at our disinfection process in a positive environment. And then we're also looking at, you know, we say we're a family around here, and we are. So what would a family do if another family member contracts COVID? So we're looking at it, how we can support not only our staff member or family member, but their family members. And so maybe that's meals that we can deliver, basic necessities. There are obviously going to have families going through a lot of stress, and we want to be able to help to the ex- There are obviously gonna have families going through a lot of stress and we want to be able to, to help to the extent that we can. Maybe it's gift cards, maybe it's meal deliveries, who knows? However, we can help, we've got a, a group that's looking at that. That group, as was my, uh, normalization group, was, is led by Susan Kyle. Susan Kyle has stepped up big here at the city and I'm so proud of her. You would be too. Uh, and I wanna just, uh, give her a shout out because, uh, the effort that she's taken on in addition to the normal duties that she had last year where she was just an HR, uh, person. She's now managing the HR department and then has taken on all of this in addition to her duties. And she is, um, just a go-getter and she leaves no, uh, nothing, uh, to chance. She's very thorough in her job and, uh, couldn't be, again, more proud of her. Uh, recovery. We are, uh, still working our recovery plan as our, our recovery czar is sitting here behind me. Uh, we have, uh, allocated the funds that the city received as part of our CARE Act, uh, submission at, uh, two hundred and eighty, two thousand dollars. Um, right now we are in the comment period. Redevelopment Commission approved that allocation. We're in the comment period. We expect to get funds sometime around July one. But this is the federal government we're dealing with and so we'll see when that happens. The state did, uh, allocate some of their CARE Act funds to local governments. So we're just now starting to, uh, see some of that guidance and what that, uh, might look like, some of the things that we can get reimbursed for. So we're just now starting to review that. We'll certainly keep you in the loop. And, uh, we still don't have our forecasting from Baker Tilly. Uh, but we know that, uh, the, the state government took in about a billion less dollars in April than they did last April. And so that was about a forty four, forty-four percent reduction in revenue. Multiple types of taxes, income taxes, gas tax, you name it. Uh, and that will ultimately, uh, come down and impact us too. It's just, it's a matter of time. Uh, our loan programs coming along, uh, we're still, uh, finalizing that and, uh, also, uh, I took delivery of about forty-eight hundred or so masks, uh, today in my office. And, um, I'm gonna give roughly half of those tomorrow to the Mishawaka Food Pantry so that they can distribute those out to some of our citizens who may not have the ability to buy them, to make them or to, uh, access them. So I'll be doing that. It's roughly it. Uh, just wanna reiterate, I mentioned how proud I was of, of Susan. I'm proud of all of our staff because they're essential workers and they showed up when, uh, you know, when there was a lot of uncertainty and a lot of, which there still is, but, uh, they showed up, ready to serve our citizens and, uh, did so without even flinching and, uh, couldn't be more proud of these people I get to, to work with. Um, I'm also proud of our citizens because we asked them to follow the guidelines, uh, that the CDC set out, that the state of Indiana set out, and even our local health department, which came out with some orders. We asked our citizens to follow those and they have, uh, by and large. And so we have, uh, as a result, seen in Mishawaka that we're not a particular hotspot and that our citizens have flattened the curve. Uh, and so this falls squarely on that, the success if there, you know, if, if you wanna look at it in a way that, you know, we haven't been impacted by other communities, it's because of our citizens. And so, um, we continue and I wanna stress, we're asking them to follow CDC recommendations and guidelines, follow the state guidelines. The governor has come out with some, some pretty thorough ones and we're asking them to follow the orders of the local health department. And so, uh, we continue to ask those things and, uh, we are certainly ourselves doing those here in the facilities that we control. Without taking any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for Mayor Wood?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Compton.
Mayor Wood, Mayor Wood, thank you again for, for that report. In the beginning you said there wasn't much there, but I heard a lot of news there, a, a lot of things I haven't heard before. So thank you very much, um, for the plans for City Hall, City Government and loans and, and such. Um, appreciate it very much. I did read in the paper, um, I don't know, Sunday, last Sunday maybe, maybe it was the Sunday, it was the Sunday before, I believe, that they reported by zip code, uh, how many people had been diagnosed with the coronavirus. Um, I would be interested in seeing that on a regular basis. Is that something that you could help us with? Um, and, and I'm not sure where those numbers came from, um, but I'm guessing with your connections you could find out and, and, um, let us know what those numbers are, uh, weekly is what I would ask.
We would love to know those weekly ourselves. Those come from the Health Department and they are very judicious about the information that they put out. Uh, and so I, uh, I'm not sure, we didn't know that information before it was, uh, you know, shared with the press. So, um, I, I will certainly try to get it because I found it helpful too. And, uh, even when you think about our zip codes, we have generally two zip codes here in Mishawaka, four six five four four, four six five four five. Those aren't just Mishawaka, they go well beyond Mishawaka's border as well.
Sure.
Yes.
Well, I, I, I would like, I would like for you to use your office to try to gain that information. I think it's important to all of us. Really, it wouldn't be, uh, it'd be good for information for the council to see what's going on in the county. But those two, uh, those two zip codes would, will be helpful. So thank you. I appreciate you, you consider doing that.
I will absolutely because it would be not only helpful for you or council or decision makers, but also for our public safety.
Agreed, agreed. Uh, the other thing I ask is, I understand from, um, a couple of sources that are at St. Joe Med and Memorial Hospital that they put out, um, I believe it's daily emails to staff and community, uh, uh, a COVID update daily. Uh, and is that something that you would, uh, reach out to those facilities and see if we can, can be part of that information? Um, especially as we start to open back up, Mayor, um, I'm, I'm concerned and I, I wanna be able to track this to the best of my ability. And, um, those seems, you know, what I asked for previously and this, um, seems to be information that might be able to give us, might be able to help us.
Our public safety personnel who are on the command committee do receive that information and I do have access to that to see it. I don't know that I can share it. Uh, would have to ask for permission because it's not our information. But, uh, I could certainly do that.
If you would do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And th- those are my questions, Mr. President. Thank you again, uh, Mayor Dave. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Compton. Other questions for Mayor Wood?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dave. Thank you very much for the, uh, the update and, uh, the provided, uh, helpful information. Um, I just have a one quick question regarding the loan program. You had, uh, could you tell me how far along are you in that process? And have you heard from any small businesses reaching out, um, expressing interest at this point?
Oh, we have received some interest from small business, at least just kind of those that know that we're working on something. Uh, we even received, uh, here just recently, uh, uh, requests from a group that bought, uh, Woody's Paint Spot. No relation, but, uh, anyway, uh, it's a theater group in there and they're wondering about, uh, the program as well. So, um, so we are getting interest right now. Uh, so we are looking at how best to fund it. And so we have a couple of different options. We wanna pick the best one. There is a possibility that the State Cares Act, um, allocation that we may receive, uh, could be a source for that. So we wanna at least review that, uh, take a look at it, see if, if that's possible. Because if that is the case, it doesn't come from any existing funds that we would have, uh, that we might have already had obligated for something else that we're gonna pull off, uh, and reprioritize. So, uh, we're reviewing that right now, but, uh, time is of the essence and we really wanna get out there fairly soon with something, knowing that businesses are hurting right now and, uh, we wanna help them to the extent we can. God bless you. Again, this is, you know, mom and pop kinds of businesses. This isn't the, you know, the big box stores of the world and probably not gonna do much for a company like, say, Lippert, uh, you know, the amounts we're talking about. But it could mean the world to, uh, uh, you know, uh, a, a local restaurant downtown, mom and pop, you know, making their family investment, uh, at their life savings into a business. And here they're watching their dream die before their eyes. And so this could make the difference between, uh, them succeeding and not. And so we wanna get those funds out there as soon as we can.
Great. Thank you very much. And, uh, one other quick comment, uh, had I not read your post on social media about your so, uh, successful weight loss? I was gonna suggest perhaps we get some meal trains going to you.
Yeah, thanks. Just make sure that on Tuesday and Thursday.
You look great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mayor Wood?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your update as usual, uh, both the positives and clearly there are, uh, any number of positives you were able to share, but we still have some challenges in front of us. But, uh, yeah, I think we all echo your, uh, appreciation, words of appreciation for our employees and the work that they have done as well as the community. Um, all of us know in our personal life how difficult it is to flip the switch and totally change your social behavior. And I, I would agree with you that by and large people have, uh, stepped up and done what they needed to do to not only keep themselves safe, but to keep others safe. Couple of follow-ups. Um, you know, through AIM, um, I received, and I, I believe others did as well, uh, the Association of Indiana Municipalities for the record, um, a summary that Barnes and Thorberg did with regard to the three hundred million of, of state money that's gonna, uh, flow to the locals. As I read this, the maximum reimbursement amount, at least what now was projected would be about one point, in excess of one point six million dollars for Mishawaka. Am I reading that the right way?
Um, yes, we saw an email to that, uh, effect, but we don't know if that's official, if that's, uh, you know, a guideline. So, uh, we're not confident to tell you that, yeah, we are getting one point six million at this point in time.
So you're not gonna go spending one point six?
Exactly, right away. And it, you know, um, my condolences to both you and maybe to Madam Controller for having to work through this. This looks to be a fairly complicated program. Everything comes with strings attached, right? It does.
Um, you know, the follow-up on Mr. Mamalanti's, uh, comments and, and questions with regard to, uh, the emergency loan program. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank you and Mr. Prince for the information that you've started to distribute to us. It's been very helpful. And I'm sure we'll, we'll see even more information tomorrow evening at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Um, a- a- and, you know, you've mentioned and referenced the work that Baker and Tilly is doing on behalf of the city now at two successive council meetings. Neither of us have any control over their work product to a certain extent. I will say that it causes me some concern that as soon as the next council meeting, we'd, uh, be asked to approve expenditures of, you know, roughly half a million dollars without having a, a snapshot of our overall city finances. So anything that could be done to further nudge Baker and Tilly to provide us that information, uh, I suspect others would agree with me that from a council standpoint, probably from your standpoint as well, it would be good for us to have the overall picture of the city finances as much as can be known at this point in time, um, before we, uh, finalize the details of that emergency loan program. So anything that could be done to expedite their work, I think would be appreciated.
We, we do reach out to them.
Yeah, there's only so much you can do. I acknowledge that.
So, um, the only comment I would say in that regard is that, uh, the funding sources that are gonna impact us the mo- that we're gonna get impacted the most by a lack of revenue or a general fund and our local income taxes, our public safety local income taxes, our CDVG, or not CBG, but our CDIT and our, uh, you know, our local road and street funds and those, those funding sources. We're not going to do the loan program out of those. We will, uh, do that program out of more stable funds that won't, that, that, they will still get impacted. But, uh, those are funding source, that's a funding source that can only go for very limited things. Uh, you know, say if we use TIF for that, then TIF can only go for very specific things. And so, um, we, uh, i- i- it's not necessarily gonna impact our ability to say, keep people working or, or do those kinds of things. So, um, we're, we're, uh, very cognizant of, uh, the potential for lost revenue and to prioritize where funding comes from based on.
And I suspect it'll be a evolving set of data points, you know, on, on through the rest of this year. Um, a- a- and you make some fair points. So, but again, the more that we can have in front of us before we take action on the, the local emergency fund in terms of that overall picture and projection for our, uh, city finances, uh, the more comfortable I think we'll all be. So anything that you can do would be appreciated. Um, one last follow-up with regard to this state money. Um, I, I appreciated your comments about the thermometers being purchased for our employees. I think that's a great step. Um, the one twist on that that I would throw in from my day job, um, I, I've worked with any number of, uh, private and public employers who are making it mandatory for their employees to take that, to have a temperature screen when they arrive. And of course, the EEOC and other federal, you know, regulatory agencies have, uh, provided enhanced flexibility for employers to do this in this area. So, um, I think anything that we can do to, to make that more mandatory than, um, you know, optional, um, people being who they are, they're gonna come in, they're gonna sit down at their desk, they're gonna start working right away and that's gonna be the last thing that they're gonna be worried about at, at, um, various points in time. But not just with regard to employees, but with regard to anyone who enters into this building. If we have the ability to provide the equipment, which it sounds like it, we do and, you know, can work through, uh, the protocols. Um, I'd put in a, a, I'd certainly support us having mandatory temperature checks for all of us. I think even as council members, we ought to be cognizant of the impact that we would have on others and, and know, you know, what our circumstance is as we arrive. But the medical experts will also say it's not foolproof because you can have asymptomatic people who, you know, don't show temperature, who still are able to spread. But it's a, it's just something that I wanted to pass along.
Well, where, where we have, uh, you know, a lot of contact with public, so public safety departments, they're doing it. It's, it's mandatory. We're able to measure it. It's part of, of, you know, our duty and obligation to our citizens to do that, to make sure that the, the public servant showing up at their doorstep, you know, is, uh, you know, safe to the extent that they can be. Um, it, it gets trickier when you have multiple shifts and people, one or two people showing up to do things like test water or wastewater, that type of thing. We've purchased the equipment, uh, no contact needed for the equipment. Uh, and then we have developed a database to do that. So, um, we, uh, we'll talk about it again at staff tomorrow, uh, about how we can make sure that we're capturing as much data as possible. Uh, but that, it's our goal to capture as much as we can possibly capture.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna shift gears then. I had, uh, a phone call with regard to the farmer's market. And, um, you know, uh, credit goes out to the park department and everybody involved who brought that to life last year. And I think it's been very, uh, well received by the community. Um, and I will admit, I didn't drive down to the farmer's market. The rain caused me to chicken out, so I'm not sure if the event was canceled or not. Um, but the question that was posed to me was, you know, what did the city do to make sure that the rules that were publicized were gonna be enforced? Did the city and the park department check with the health department to make sure that it was okay for larger groups to congregate in the park? Uh, you know, people are referencing the governor's guidelines and the Lebanon twenty-five and some of the, uh, communal events that still aren't, um, supposed to be occurring under stage two. So I was hoping that you could talk to us a little bit about the, the farmer's market to the extent that you, you have, uh, your conversion with any of those details. Did it, did it take place and what were the safety measures that were put in place?
So it did take place. So it did take place. The rain kept down not only attendees, but also vendors. We were anticipating about 28 vendors. We got about 14 there. And so it's considered essential, farmer's markets are, so we can have them. And so we felt it was a good, you know, a good service for our citizens where they can go and get things such as fresh vegetables and those types of things at a very reasonable price. Before we committed to doing this, we developed a plan which included signage, which included multiple hand, you know, sanitizing stations. We then, before we, you know, before we gave permission for the vendors to participate, they had to participate in training about how to handle customers and such. So, you know, they strongly encouraged masks to be worn and then also the vendors did that as well. And then the vendors were then trying to deal with a non-cash situation as best as possible. And, but I too did, I did not go down there yesterday, so I, you know, I'm not sure how it went. But we have a whole list of guidelines here. So get in and get out as quickly as possible, leave your pets at home, maintain six-foot social distance at all time. You touch it, you buy it, use a card or exact change, be patient, be kind, thank your vendors. Do your best to place pre-orders, sanitize your hands before entering and after leaving. Know that you know what you want before you get to the front of the line. Don't eat or drink at the market. Take your goods home and enjoy. And then again, we recommend the wearing of face masks. And so this was distributed to all of our vendors and put on all of our social media accounts and different things. So.
After I received the call, I went and I dropped it. And I agree with you, you know, it's very well done. You know, one of the questions I had though is, Ed, thank you, Mr. Prince. I, I don't think anyone, myself included, is going to advocate for people to be tackled or arrested as, to the extent that they wouldn't comply with these guidelines. But that enforcement element of it, you know, the guidelines aren't always going to be followed, human nature being what it is. So who's responsible for ensuring that at this type of event that the guidelines are compliant?
Well, we have some park staff down there that can, can look out after that. But as we have on many things, we rely on our public to be responsible. Ultimately, it's decisions that our public, our citizens make that, you know, that, that will have the most impact. And so we put out as much signage, as much information as we possibly can. At the end of the day, we rely on our public to do the right thing.
And I certainly agree with it. And going back to what we both said, you know, I think most of us would agree that by and large, people are going over and above and doing the right thing. I think we've all seen a significant number of people that despite the yellow tape around playgrounds, people are congregating. You know, there, there are those outliers who are just not going to comply with even well-thought-out guidelines like we have here. And I, I do believe that there is some concern amongst a significant number of our residents that while everyone is happy that we're opening up, there's a concern with regard to what happens when those outliers don't follow the guidelines that we put out, that the CDC puts out, that the governor puts out. And it, it's a situation where that, those acts of non-compliance, as few or as many as they may be, not only have an impact upon the individual, but in this instance, they project risk upon everybody who comes in contact with them. So there is some concern, and I think in particular, when we're holding an event and we're inviting presumptively larger groups to be there, we hope that a lot of people are going to attend these events that have in some ability, not just to rely on folks, but to do what we can without overstepping to enforce the guidelines and try to hit that sweet spot is important. Because again, as people read that, you know, there have been some negative data indicators since Indiana and the county has reopened, I, I hear some concern, not just from residents, but from, you know, extended members of my own family as well. So I appreciate the efforts that you and the park department, our public safety agencies, everybody involved have done to try to address it. But hopefully we'll continue to do what we can to address those concerns as we are moving toward the new normal.
Parks Department is doing, I mean, they're coming up with all kinds of planning. It's constantly in every thought that they have as far as whether to open this amenity or that amenity. Some will open, some we won't. But the top priority is if we are able to open it, what does that mean for public safety? And so that's how they approach, that's how all of our staff approaches everything around here. And I, you know, I think they've, that, that they have gone above and beyond in trying to think of everything, trying to put plans in place, trying to put proper signage, proper disinfection, proper training in place to, to manage it. But at the end of the day, you know, we, we've got no ability really to come in and, you know, tackle people. And we can warn, we can, you know, encourage and those types of things.
And again, as I've said a couple of times, I'm not advocating for that either, but I do think that we have some responsibility if we're going to host events, where larger numbers are going to congregate, not just to rely on a sign to engender compliance, but to do everything else that we can to make sure that people are safe while they're at an event that we're hosting. So I appreciate your comments. And again, thanks to the park department for the series of events that they had, you know, virtual events that, you know, allowed people who were in the throes of educating and dealing with their children at home. They, they did a wonderful job of a, a constant series of events. So our thanks to them as well. I appreciate your answers and the, and the information that you shared with us this evening. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mayor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also under new business, we have a discussion item with regard to our meeting date in June, more to the point, our first meeting date. As the council will recall, due to the alter election cycle, we had previously taken action to change our meeting date from June 1st to June 3rd, which is our typical action in anticipation that City Hall will be a polling place. Now, in light of the fact that both centers are going to be in place throughout the county and City Hall will not be used as a polling place, in theory, it allows us to revert back to our normal schedule and once again meet on June 1st, if that's the pleasure of the council. So I will throw that out for discussion and consideration.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we go back to meeting June 1st, the first Monday of the month.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to, once again, change our first meeting date in June from June 3rd to the originally scheduled date of June 1st. Is there any other comment or question from the council? If not, then I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please follow the council?
Here it is. Mrs. Demain?
Yes.
Mr. Beniki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalanti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The date change is approved with a nine-two-zero vote.
Thank you, folks. Is there any other new business to come before the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Mamalanti.
Thank you. An attempt to maintain the strong interest and momentum, momentum of the long-lasting Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch Meeting. I'll be attempting the, the first remote meeting via Zoom that will be on the 20th at seven o'clock. And I can provide the, the meeting information as well. Madam Clerk, would you like me to record or mention the meeting ID number now? Or? No?
Do you, do you plan on me advertising this for you?
Not, no. I was just wondering if anybody from the press was there. I can, I can send them an email as well.
I don't think there's anyone here from, well, Nicholas has got us on machine access, so you may want to go ahead and give that Zoom number.
Okay. If I could read it, you can just join on to zoom.com and hit join a meeting. The meeting ID number is seven, one, five, six, seven, nine, two, five, three, nine. And the password is seven, eight, three, two, seven, nine. That's this Wednesday, the 20th at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalanti. Any other new business?
One brief item, and it echoes some of Mayor Wood's comments once again. I learned today that this is National EMS Week. It seems like there's a week for, for everything. But this is, this one is very well taken, particularly in this time where our EMS department and those across the nation are on the front lines and providing valuable service. So congratulations to all EMS, congratulations to all EMS workers throughout the country, and in particular, those who serve the citizens here in Mishawaka. Also, thank you once again to the city IT department for working with us to make this meeting, meeting available electronically. Madam Clerk as well, thank you for, for your assistance. A final note, as has been stated before, the Mishawaka County Council has instituted changes in the way in which its meetings will be conducted during the current public health emergency. These changes are consistent with the terms of multiple executive orders issued by Governor Holcomb, as well as related legal guidance. It is anticipated that the council's normal meeting procedures will be reinstated at the commotion of the public health emergency. In the meantime, physical attendance at council meetings will continue to be restricted in accordance with relevant guidance related to limitations on public gatherings and social distancing. During the public health emergency, council members, as well as members of the public and media, will continue to be afforded the opportunity to remotely access council meetings. Recordings of council meetings, if applicable, and the minutes of the meetings will also be made available to the public and the media as soon as is possible.
And with that, if there's no other business to come before the council, motion to adjourn is in order. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.